Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is March the 20th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I would like to call upon Fred Orkut to do our invocation for us. He's with the Granbury Baptist Church and the Hood County Prayer Task Force, followed by our pledge allegiance and our Texas pledge given by Councilman Greg Corgan. All rise, please.
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, we thank you for your great love for us, especially, Lord, the love you showed us on the cross. Lord, I pray your blessing on the council and the mayor as they handle the business of our city. Give them wisdom to do it right. Give them joy in their service, Lord, and bless them abundantly. We trust you for it all, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, we will have a presentation. This presentation is of the Open Government Transparency Platform, offering cloud-based financial reporting and data visualization solutions for the city of Granbury. And I'm going to call upon Chris Coffin and his staff to give this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We're really excited about rolling this application out to not only you, but to the public. It really makes it easy for the citizens and the elected officials to see the finances of the city and kind of opens up the window to our world as far as how the money is received and expended and our budgeting processes and everything. So turn it over to the ladies, Ava and Elizabeth, who worked really hard to implement this, and I'll let them take over. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, council, mayor, city manager. I would like to take this opportunity and introduce you to our new financial website. As you know, all cities and counties are trying to be very transparent, open, and provide information to their stakeholders and citizens. And I'm eager to report that our city now joined this effort of being transparent and to offer this online interactive tool that will allow us to let our citizens, council, department heads, anyone who is interested to see our financial data up-to-date. This online tool is called OpenGov. It's a cloud-based solution that is very easy to use, and it provides on-demand access to citizens or anyone else who is interested to see how the city's revenues are trending or access our spending data. Additionally, through integration with our accounting software, we are able to update this information daily. Therefore, the information is very close to real time. Through OpenGov, our city will be able to demonstrate accountability to our citizens, how the money is being spent, and how their tax dollars are valued and impactful. Through OpenGov, our city will be able to achieve transparency, openness, and responsiveness. And at this time, I would like to let Elizabeth Bailey, our city's financial analyst, who worked really hard and played a very important role to set up this platform, to show you how easy it is to use and how easy it is to access. And even when you are on the go, you have your smart device. You can pull up this information anytime. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Ava. The city of Granbury has been awarded a Comptroller's Transparency Star for traditional finances. Up to today, we have already offered several ways for citizens to be informed about their city's financial information. In addition to the required publications of the adopted budget and the annual CAFER, we have posted graphs and tables summarizing the budget, our financials, debt standings, and even our check register. However, today, we are offering an even more transparent portal for our citizens, council, and staff to get interactive with our financial data. From several locations on our website, you can jump into the OpenGov portal. The best way to start would be to go to granbury.org backslash OpenGov. Here you see a sample of the types of graphs where you might want to drill down that are linked to the portal, but we can jump straight into the site. This is what it looks like. The first graph you will land on will be "How is the city of Granbury trending year-to-date?" This table shows our revenue totals as of February for the past five years. From here, you see that it has broken down into several different types of revenue: electric, other taxes, franchise, water. It sorted largest to smallest at this time. But you can drill down on any one of these sections to see more information. So I'm going to click on "Other Taxes and Franchise Fees." So you see I have the blue area highlighted. If I click on it, it shows me the breakdown of this grouping. Once you click here, you can see what makes up other taxes and franchise fees, and I can drill down even further, for example, to our utility fund franchise fees. So this shows us over the past five years what we've collected in utility franchise fees as of February. If you scroll down to the bottom, there's always going to be a table that shows you the actual numbers that make up the graph. On the left side, Finance has already set up some views for you to quickly navigate through this data financial information. So, for example, I have citywide expenses also set up. So the click you switch over from revenues to expenses, the same thing broken down by type that you can drill down into. In addition to year-to-date, we also have some interactive budget reports. Here you can see the historical trend of budgeted revenues and expenses. From this view, you can also continue to drill down. For example, let's click on revenues to see what makes up the budget of revenue. And then I can click on any one of these types. So, for example, intergovernmental. These are grants and revenue we receive from other governments. And I can see what makes up each of these groups. Again, there's a table at the bottom that shows me more specifically the data that's within that graph. We also have our annual report. This report shows the historical actuals compared to the current year's budget citywide. We have saved views for this one as well. So I can also see, for example, major expenses that make up our budget: public works, public safety, airport, culture and rec, admin. When you click on a certain view for this one year, it also allows you, this bar at the bottom, to slide back and forth to see previous years and what makes up those expenses. We have our O&amp;M versus INS in property tax. So there's our historical actuals and our budgeted. A neat feature of OpenGov is how quickly information can be brought to you. So if you'll see, if I hover over any of these pieces, what's called a call-out box is brought up. It's probably small for y'all, but I'll tell you what it says. It shows me what this O&amp;M amount is. So it shows that last year, our actual O&amp;M was 2.5 million. Underneath that, in parentheses, it shows me that that is 47% of our total property tax. And then it shows me the change. So that's an increase of 14% from the prior year. Within clicks, you have that type of information at your fingertips. One of the major requirements of the Comptroller's Transparency Star is also the publication of the city's check register. Previously, to meet this requirement, it took a lot of time and data mining on our staff to gather the data and publish it in a meaningful format for our citizens. With OpenGov, this data is automatically published online and downloaded every night without additional staff time at all. The table below allows you to filter the columns by, for example, check date or check number. We also, as you can see from the saved views, have every transaction from the city posted back to fiscal year 12/3. At this time, the Finance Department is also working toward earning another level of the Comptroller's Transparency Stars for debt. This final section shows our outstanding bond issues and what portion is due each year. We have also broken that down for you by principle in the saved views and also by funding source, tax-supported or revenue-supported. With this amazing and easy-to-use transparency tool, we feel that we will easily be able to meet the requirements for this additional star as well.
Thank you, Elizabeth. If you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them for you.
Where have you been? That was a great presentation, it really was. I hope that makes the front page of the Hood County News. That was good stuff. It really was.
She's been working really hard.
Go ahead and make a place on the wall for that plaque, because I know it's coming, you know. That was excellent, really good. And you say you can roll that out there. I mean, all the citizens have accessibility and all that for that, right?
Yeah, that's what Elizabeth actually was showing, that through our website, all they have to do is go to www.granbury.org backslash OpenGov or access it through our department. If you find, under departments, you pull up Finance, it will be the first option for you to get to it. And once you are there, you are able to just click on any chart and pull it up as well. So anybody can use it.
And it'll be updated as you guys get your information, right?
Actually, it's updated every day because it's integrated with our accounting system. So the data is constantly, every night, is fed into this system. So the check register is updated, the annual reports are updated. We can develop more views. Elizabeth was showing you that different views that are already set up. We can also develop even more views. But the system allows our citizens, our council, to filter, to sort however they want to, drill into the information as far as they want to go. So that is already available. But we are trying to make it as easy as possible for anyone who is accessing it. That's the reason we went ahead and set up different views and different options. So you can easily just click on that information and be able to pull up the chart. And as she showed you, on the top side, on the right side, you can even change the format of the graph. So if you don't want a bar graph, you want a chart graph, then you just click off a button, you can access the information. And you can actually pull up the number by just looking at the table right under the graph as well. But you can slice it, dice it however you want to. The information is available.
That's great.
You know, I might add that we bought this software about August last year, and we were, you know, wrapping up the budget and everything. And Elizabeth is the one solely responsible for putting that huge document together that y'all received, and it is published. But she works with us. But after that, they went to work full speed on this, and it's taken that much time to format everything and get it lined up to where it works. So very, very good-looking project. Thank you all.
So you can take the rest of the day off.
Counsel, any more, any questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor, really, I just want to make a quick comment. This is very impressive. While you were doing your presentation, I actually pulled it up on my phone, and it's even very user-friendly on your cellphone. You know, same concept. You can dig very deeply into this. So I appreciate your effort on this. Thank you. I think people will be very pleased with this.
What did I tell you about using your cellphone up against the dice?
For business purposes.
Very good, thank you. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I was going to say, Mayor, I think you did a great job.
Tony, don't crash it on us or anything.
Well, you know, I was looking at it. No, it's a great job.
At this time, we'll go into our consent agenda. The first item being consider approving the City Council Meeting Minutes of March the 6th, 2018, regular meeting. The second one being receiving a 2017 racial profile report. The next item was to consider extending the term or the agreement of the lease space between the city of Granbury and the A&amp;M University System. The fourth one being consider adopting Resolution 1807. The fifth one being to, I'm sorry, that's it, the consent agenda. So, council, you've had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda items there. Are there's any of those items that you'd like to discuss or pull off of the consent agenda at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Show move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Counsel, any more discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. Counsel, we have two items on the deliberation agenda that we are going to pull off that agenda for consultation with our attorneys, that being item number five, considering the chapter 380, and also item number seven with the approving of ordinance 1824 for the downtown sidewalk regulations. So we're going to pull those off, and we'll have some more discussion with our attorneys in the executive session. So we're going to move down to item number six, which is a presentation for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Audit of the City of Granbury for the fiscal year 2016-17. I'm going to call upon Chris Coffin for a staff report on that one, please.
You bet. As y'all know, we are required to do an annual, independent annual report audit for you, and we've completed that. Our deadline's the end of the month. And it took a little while to put the document together, but the auditors have basically had their paperwork done probably about 60 days ago, but we just needed to get all the fine, the i's dotted and the t's crossed, all the documents in here. So this was provided to you in your council packet. And then we also provided a written copy for you to take home with you tonight so you'd have it at your home. Ava, would you like to introduce our auditor and share anything you'd like to share in preparation of the audit?
I think you covered everything. I was going to basically say the same thing. We have been audited back in November. We get audited annually, and after that, we all work together to prepare this annual audit that is a required document that has to be filed with several different agencies, stakeholders, sent out, uploaded on websites. There's a lot of mandatory reporting that is required. As Chris said, the document was emailed out to you, and we also wanted you to have a paper copy because it's a good read. I know that. So with that, I want to introduce our auditor, our own auditor, Daniel Hungerford. He's with George Morgan and SNEAT. And he is the city's main auditor, who worked on this project with us.
Good evening. I just want to go over the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report briefly and see if you have any questions. Each year, Ava, she submits this to the Government Finance Officers Association. And the previous year, we received the Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting. We've gone through this report, and we think it'll receive the same award this year. Our independent auditor's report is on pages one through three. We've issued a unmodified or clean opinion standard report that says that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also issued an independent auditor's report on internal control and compliance based on, in accordance with government auditing standards. It's on pages 119 and 120. We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control or any instances of non-compliance that we were required to report in that report. Now, I just want to hit a few of the high points this year. Your governmental funds are on pages 20 through 23. The revenue expenditures and changes of fund balance is on page 22. All of your governmental funds had positive changes in fund balance, except for the Capital Projects Fund. That's normal in a year when you're completing projects. You're going to have expenses and no revenue. The General Fund had a revenues over expenditures of about $150,000 and a increase in fund balance of $1,164,000. Some of the high points on your General Fund. Your revenues increased about 2.2 million. $300,000 of that was in property taxes because your property values increased about $131 million. That's the second year in a row you've had large, around $100 million increase in your property values. Sales tax increased about $300,000. That's due to continued growth in your local economy. And your intergovernmental revenue increased about 1.3 million. That's because this year, you had about a million and a half grant for the Downtown Square project. Your expenses also increased, they increased about 2.6 million. Some of the significant increases were due to roof repairs, construction of the Memorial Park, fire truck, radios and other fire department improvements, and then also about $1,009,000 for the Downtown Square project. At year-end, your General Fund unassigned fund balance was about 6.2 million. Your goal is to maintain unassigned fund balance of 25% of your expenditures. And at year-end, you exceeded that, and your unassigned fund balance was 40%. Your proprietary funds, utility and airport funds are on pages 24 through 27. During the year, the utility fund and airport fund both reported positive changes of fund balance. Operating income for the utility fund was about $3 million compared to about $1.2 million in the prior year. The reason for the increase there is that you had about a $680,000 increase in water and wastewater charges because you've added a lot of customers. Your electricity charges increased about half a million because of a rate increase you did in May of '16. Unrestricted net position of the utility fund was 4.8 million, and that was 31% of expenditures. So it exceeded your goal there also. During the year, the city issued $15 million in certificates of obligation. Your debt increased from $67 million to $79 million. Another significant change this year was you received $3.6 million in grants for the airport fund, reimbursing for land acquisition in previous years. And that money's, while it's in your operating account, I think it's kind of earmarked for future construction on the ramp project or the runaway expansion. One change I wanted to point out this year is there was a new Government Accounting Standards Board Statement, Statement Number 77, regarding tax abatements. So we added a new disclosure on page 62. This disclosure just shows the taxes that the city has abated during this period. During the year, the city was required to have a single audit. There were two major programs that we audited in the single audit. One was the Airport Improvement Program. The other was the Highway Planning and Construction. Both were passed through Texas DOT. We did not report any findings or have any question costs related to those major programs. Outside of the CAFER, we also issued a one-page management comment letter. It should be loose in the CAFER. We had one suggestion for improvement in the city's internal controls. This had to do with change orders. Our recommendation is just that the city, the city council be notified of potential overages in construction projects and approve change orders in a timely manner when overages are discovered. That was the only internal control issue that we came across this year. The audit process went smooth. Ava and her staff had everything ready for us to do the audit, and we were able to get in and out in a timely manner and didn't have any problems. Do you have any questions for me about anything in any of our reports?
Mayor, I have one.
Councilman Allen.
Actually, I got two. One of them, you said the lack of rate went up. Is why we came up with a half million more?
Yes, it wasn't during this year, but it was in May of '16. And so for the first part of the year, your income was up compared to the first half of the previous year.
Okay. When did we change, Chris, the? When y'all adopted the provisions to allow to collect for those ERCOT pass-through fees. Okay. But whenever we got a new contract, I thought we split the difference with the citizens. We did. It's a different ordinance, and that happened. It'll be in the next year's. Be in the next year, okay, all right. So it should be a lot better. In 2016, you adopted the provisions to allow us to collect those fees that ERCOT sends us, that we've been taking on the chin. And that is equivalent of about a half million dollars. And we had to pay that out. So it's not like it just went in the bank. Okay. And the next question on page 27, at the top, you've got cash to employees. There was like 1.6 million? Am I looking at that wrong?
That's on the cash flow statement? Yes, sir. That's about, that's 1.6 million paid to employees. This is only of the, that's only for the utility fund.
When you say cash, you mean with a check?
Well, for the year, that's how much you paid to employees.
In payroll?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's not a cash deal to them.
Well, it's not cash. It's through their payroll checks throughout the year. That's what you paid to those, to your employees.
They had to get a forklift and bring me that pallet of mine. I was going to say, I, you know, it sounded good, and I thought, well, how are we paying on cash?
Well, it's payroll checks through the bank, but it's, this is just a reconciliation from your cash that's on your, on page 24. It's a reconciliation from cash last year to this year.
Yeah. I'm not a financial genius. I'm just asking. I'm going to let Mr. Mobley ask you some questions.
But you know cash and credit and all that, right?
Yeah, I know credit.
Mr. Mayor?
How's my Mobley?
Hey, I just have a couple of questions. On page 11, we're showing revenue increased 16% while expenditures increased right at 21%. In your expert opinion, should we be concerned?
Well, I think that a lot of this increase has to do with the street project.
What?
Well, it has to do with the Downtown Square project. The General Fund paid about 1.9 million of that, and the grant was about 1.5 million.
1.6.
Well, 1.6.
1.6 of the 1.9 or 1.6 in addition to the?
1.6 of the 1.9. So that's part of the reason for the increase in those expenses. Also, part of that's a fire truck, but it was purchased with a lease. And the lease doesn't show up in the revenues, but you show the fire truck there in the expenses.
Well, and also on that same page, you have one thing listed, the Memorial Lane project.
Yeah, I thought that was.
And that was all private funding. So how does it end up in this report?
Well, the money's.
So it just passed through?
It passed through. So you have revenues and expenses. So it's more or less a wash, Memorial Lane project is.
I'll stop right there since Julia's here. And my last question, one of your comments was about change orders and running it through the council. Are there specific projects that you noticed in this report that really stuck out?
Well, in this report, there was one project that really brought. Well, in this report, there was one project that really brought the comment about, and it was the Downtown Square project. Because in that project, you're...
Change order.
In that project, the costs ended up, the amount the city paid was more than the contract that had been approved by the council. I know that in December meeting, you ratified those total costs, but...
Which we had to do at that point.
Right. At that point, you had to do that. At September 30th, the costs exceeded the approved contract and change order by about 300,000.
So, you're just saying we need to know that before it happens, before the invoices start coming in?
I would say as soon, we're just saying as soon as you realize that there's an issue and it's going to cost more than what's been approved, that at that time, you should have discussion and approve a change order.
Probably a great idea. Hey, so Ava, in the future, could you do me a favor? Please don't tease me with two financial reports in one night. This is way too much.
I understood both of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any more questions or?
I would like to clarify that overage that we're talking about here on the Main Street project. As you'll recall, about 90 percent of that was due to that water line project and didn't have all the numbers in, and we needed to fix it, we needed to move ahead. So, I explained all that in the past.
Well, and nobody's making any accusations here, Chris. We're just finding out what is real.
I'm clearing the record for that video there.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's what it's all about, is we just couldn't stop the project and know what it was going to cost.
And all we're asking is that we see it before the invoices hit. We need to know it's coming before it gets here.
In the future, probably what we'd need to do on something like that where we're dealing with a reconstruction, I offer this as advice for a future. My internal solution would be look further than $75,000 contingency fee into the project whenever you have that kind of expense for the water lines.
Well, and also have one point of contact from the city. I think that helps as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyway, we'll make sure that doesn't happen again.
Counsel, any more questions? Thank you very much. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, there is a lot of reading here to do too, so.
I'm so excited.
Yeah. It'll help out at budget time for the commission.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Our next item, like I say, we're going to remove item number seven. The next item will move down to item number eight would be consider appointing members for the Charter Review Commission and the MUAB Board to fill vacant seats.
Mayor, did you get the email?
Yes, I did. As you know, member Bob Haggard has resigned as a member of the Charter Review Commission and the MUAB Board and also the zoning board of adjustments. So, tonight, we are going to select a person for the MUAB Board and the Charter Review Board. And counsel, if you look in your packets there, we had two for the Charter Review, but one of those has removed his name from that one. So, now we have an applicant for the MUAB and an applicant for the Charter Review, and those being Gary, let's see, we got John Grace for the Charter Review and Jerry Colbert, is that right?
Miller.
Miller withdrew.
Miller was removed.
He withdrew today. He fell and had an accident.
That's going to be easy, isn't it? Colbert. Jerry Colbert.
Yeah, Jerry Colbert. So, we have those two candidates. So, at this time, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to, we'll start with the Charter Review, and I'll entertain a motion to accept John Grace's application.
Show move.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion on that one? All in favor of John Grace on the Charter Review, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved for John Grace on the Charter Review. The next one will be our MUAB Board, and we've got Jerry Colbert as an applicant for that one. I'll entertain a motion to approve that application for the MUAB Board.
Show move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Mayor. Any more discussion on that one, counsel? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved for the MUAB Board. Jerry Colbert. Well, it's a short council meeting. Appreciate everybody coming. If you want to hang around after our executive session. But at this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council is convening in open session and that all of our members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, section 551071, consultation with our attorney, and section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. The council has returned from executive session. There was no action taken in executive session. We are now into, we are now back into open session. Counsel, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the city manager to negotiate a lease extension on the Hilton Garden Inn properties.
We have a motion to negotiate a lease extension on the Hilton Gardens Inn property. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Allen?
Corgan.
Corgan, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, no, no, they don't. So, we have a motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Corgan?
Can I ask the question on that?
Yes, you may. This is in the discussion time of it, Mr. Allen. You got to, you want to make a discussion?
Thank you so much, Mayor. And a motion, he's going to bring it back to the council, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Any more discussion? If no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Look forward to that. Counsel, any more discussion? If there is no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.